Okay, it is about that time we can get started. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the December 2025 zoning Board of Appeals meeting. My name is Kelly Donovan and I'm the Chair of this board. For those of you who never attended one of our meetings, I'll first explain how the meeting is conducted. We'll ask applicant to come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Then you'll be able to discuss your proposed project or request for variance. We'll probably have questions for you after that. The floor will be open for anyone who'd like to speak in favor or against the proposed project or variance. Once everyone's had an opportunity to speak, the public hearing will be officially closed and no new testimony will be taken. After the public hearings have been held, the board will deliberate and make a decision on each case. Public is welcome to stay through deliberations, but again, no public input is permitted. For those applicants who wish not to stay through deliberations, Planning Department staff will be available tomorrow with the board's decisions. Zoning Board of Appeals is a five-member board. Tonight, we have four members present and that constitutes a quorum. I will now call the roll. Ms. Bucci, Mr. Landers.
Present.
Mr. Nago. And Mr. Donovan is present. I see we have minutes from last month. Did everybody get a chance to look them over?
Yes.
Okay. Any changes, updates?
No.
Is there a motion for approving them? Okay, can I get a second? Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
That's three ayes and one abstain. I wasn't here, but the minutes looked very good. Thank you, Sean. That gets us to our first applicant.
Kelly.
Yep.
Could I make a suggestion that this case be tabled to the bottom of the agenda because the applicant does not appear to be here?
I was just gonna ask you that. Okay. So we will bump everybody else up one. Okay. Can I make a motion? I would like to make a motion to change the agenda, the order of cases, and move Lucky One Grocery Corp. from the first slot to the third slot, seeing that they're not in attendance yet. Could I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, okay. So now we'll move along to the second applicant. It's Reagan Development Corp., 1 North Depot Street, use variance to allow residential use on the ground floor where it's prohibited in C1 Service Commercial District. And I see the applicants are here already. Please introduce yourselves and tell project.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Campbell. I'm an attorney with Hymen Howard &amp; Cattell. This is Larry Reagan, the applicant principal. And as you've indicated, this is a project for an adaptive reuse of the 1 North Depot building. The need for variance is pursuant to Section 41032A1. In the C1 Service Commercial District, residential uses are not allowed within the first 30 feet of the ground floor of any building measured from the front facade towards the rear. The variance request is to allow residential use in that space. This is sort of an interesting application. It's kind of a hybrid between a use variance and an area variance. There's a dimensional requirement and also a use requirement. But I'll go through the criteria for the use variance first. The first criteria is with a reasonable return question. As you may know, the building is uninhabitable at current. It has been vacant for over 10 years and for sale for four. The project cost estimate is approximately $32 million for renovation of the property into 50 apartments. This is the, an adaptive reuse of a historic building, so there'll be historic tax credits associated with the project. The exterior facade will remain as it is, although if there's any maintenance that needs to be done, that certainly will be taken care of. The interior of the building will be essentially completely redone. The floors are collapsing on each other. The roof is partially collapsed, so it's a pretty much a gut job on the inside. The applicant is working with the New York State Historic Credit and other state agencies, including Broom County and the City of Binghamton, to fund the project. I'm not sure if you all received this in your packet. Tito, did they get this? This was the breakdown? Okay. You want me to just copy that? So those are just showing you the costs of the project. Again, the emphasis for the funding sources for this project are affordable housing. This is not a low-income project. This is an affordable project. It'll be about 80% of the area median income. So looking to have working individuals and families in the building. Unfortunately, commercial uses of any kind are not permitted with these funding resources. So without this variance, this project cannot move forward. We're just not, not allowed to have any commercial activity in the building at all. If you'd like me to go through these numbers, I can, but they're pretty self-evident. You can see they're broken down into a per-unit cost. Kind of outlines all the funding sources. These are numbers that I don't fully understand myself, but Larry does. So if you have any questions about them, you certainly can ask. The project is unique to the extent that it is a very oddly shaped building. It kind of comes to a point, I think in your packets, you probably have a picture of it. I also have the first-floor floor plan, and just to show you, that pink line would be the area in which we're seeking the variance. So residential uses are allowed on the ground floor, just not within the first 30 feet from the facade back. The facade, the front facade, as best I can tell, is, is the railroad track side of the building. So it's, there is no facade in any other location. I believe and I, and I think that the Binghamton zoning regulations also have the same prohibition in the downtown business district. And I was always of the understanding that this was created, this prohibition, to maintain a streetscape, a commercial streetscape, not have, for example, on Court Street bedrooms facing out onto Court Street, but making sure that that stays like a commercial area. I'm not exactly, to be honest with you, sure why this prohibition applies in the service commercial district, but it does. So here we are. So it's unique for two reasons, both the shape of the building and also the location on the railroad tracks. So there's no, nobody looking at this building other than those people that might be going there for a reason. There is another residential building adjacent to it. So it's just, it's kind of a unique situation. And again, the, the configuration of the building itself is unique. This will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. In fact, we would submit to you that it will elevate the neighborhood by occupying a facility that's been vacant for over 10 years and is, you know, collapsing around it. It'll improve the area by bringing residents for 50 apartments to that area, sort of shining a light on it, and also the economic impacts of having people living downtown and supporting downtown businesses. Those are certainly economic benefits that the downtown businesses will appreciate. The self-created hardship, you know, that's always a hard question. We certainly didn't create the hardship and we are contract vendors. This building has not been purchased yet. The purchase is subject to all our approvals. You know, it's an interesting area. So there's been various things tried there. As you might remember, there was a bar restaurant place down there. Didn't do well, I think because of the combination of the residential and the commercial component. It was just, it was loud and it was loud for the residents and the, you know, I remember hearing a lot of complaints from the residential tenants about noise. So that, that's another reason why, you know, this mix probably isn't the best to have commercial on the ground floor and residential around it. And again, it's also unique because the funding sources do not permit any commercial activity. You also have a unknown developer. I don't, you know, know if Larry has shared with you, but he has also developed the Century and Sunrise Buildings in Johnson City. Those are the two, the old EJ buildings, right, right on the railroad tracks, two brick big buildings there. I was involved with him in that project and it's been very successful, very well-received. And, you know, apparently he likes the community because he came back again. So without these funding sources, the project cannot move forward and the community will lose the opportunity to bring to life this historic building. Let's see if I missed anything. I think, I think that's pretty much it.
Okay, members of the board, do you have any questions for the applicant? Oh, go ahead.
Question.
Yes. Yeah, but we would lose, I think, five apartments if I'm, if I'm reading right. And although that's an interesting bit of information, it's sort of irrelevant because we would have no apartments if we are not able to overcome this prohibition from commercial use.
There we go. Alright, thank you.
Sure.
Now, I think some of the requirement on the residential being on the, not being allowed on the front has to do with security for the residential area.
That's something to consider. I think really the intent was when you have a traditional commercial corridor to have a row of businesses, so it's more of a streetscape issue. And we have had issues before that amendment was made to the code with storefronts on Clinton Street and Conklin Ave and other traditional commercial corridors being cited over for apartments. And it sort of disrupts the, the aesthetic of those areas. But this is not a traditional commercial corridor.
No, it's not. I'm assuming, I'm assuming there'll be a consideration for security of the first floor residents.
Key card access.
Yeah, there's a, there'll, it'll be a fob system. So that's typically what we do in all of our buildings. So there'll be a key fob and each tenant will have a key fob or two key fobs. And it's, and then there's a, you know, they'll be buzzed in if there'll be an intercom, a video intercom at the, at the front.
And it looks like on the side, is that the side towards the railroad is that it's all windows?
Yes.
There's no, no doors on that side?
We weren't planning on doing any access doors or deck doors off of the units. No.
Okay.
Just wanted to keep it safe as possible.
Very good. Any other, any other questions from the board?
I, I guess I also should mention for the record that the Planning Commission did approve the project, subject to your approval.
And what, what's your timeframe looking like roughly?
So all the funding sources are moving ahead. The county funds, the state funds. The, the city is also working with us on some funding sources. We're going through the DEC with the Brownfield Program. Where it takes a while to get that and work it through the process, so that should be probably in May. And the historic credits at the federal on the state level are moving forward nicely. Also, we're looking at May for approvals, so a June closing. And so close June, July, and then about a 17, 18-month construction and then occupancy from there. So start July of '26 and then 15 to 18 months from there.
Sounds like a nice ambitious schedule. Okay.
I always say ish.
Yes.
Coming from the university, we understand ish. Okay, anything else? Alright, thank you very much. Stand by. I think we'll consider doing the public hearing part now.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to, we need anything else before we open? I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing for, let me get the number right. 1 North Depot Street. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that's unanimous. Okay, that being said, anyone present wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed project, come on down. State your name and address for the record and tell us your thoughts.
Good evening. Mark Yanati, 21 North Depot Street, Binghamton. How are you? My thoughts are I'm exciting. It's, it's exciting project for somebody as ambitious to take on a project like that. It really does take a special kind of developer with a unique kind of vision and an appetite for a whole lot of risk. I live next door with my wife and child. I've watched, I've owned my units at 21 North Depot Street since 2012. I've watched this building deteriorate over time with a tremendous amount of potential. And a person as myself who has a passion for rehabilitating old or historical buildings, sad in me to see the condition that these buildings have become. And my, you know, my, my very, very big concern is that if something isn't done fairly quickly, that you're gonna end up having GORIC or LCP over there demolishing this buildings, which would be, you're really sad. There's a tremendous need for additional housing in the area. I think this is a great project and I'm, I'm encouraged by it and I hope you'll all move forward to approve it.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor or against proposed project? Did we get any feedback online or emails or anything? No calls? Nothing? Okay. And then I would like to make a motion to close the public hearing for 1 North Depot Street. Can I get a second? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Let's see, where am I? Alright, so we have a use variance and we have to go through all those criteria, but we also have, we have a seeker unlisted, which we need to address. Is there anything else we need to address? We already made note that the planning, planning has gone through this and moved it on down the path. I would like to move that this is a seeker unlisted and that, I would also move that zoning board is the lead agency for seeker. Can I get a second? All in favor? Okay, now I'll go through the criteria quickly. And if I need any help, I'll call on you over there. But as I, this is just a, a process and the staff leaves some blank spaces for us to, to put, point out areas that may be of concern, but we need to go through all the criteria here. So this is stating environmental quality review. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? And we have to decide whether it's a no or small impact or a moderate to large impact. And I would say that that would be a known as small impact. The, the, that we are not following zoning specifically, its impact on environmental quality. Okay. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? Small than, I mean, if it were occupied in its original, original incarnation, it would be much different and probably more busy, but I think overall it'd be a little to no impact on the environment. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No, it will improve the area. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? That should not affect it. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? That should not affect that either. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? That should be no effect. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public-private wastewater treatment utilities? I would say small to no impact there environmentally. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? For example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Having gone through the criteria, I would move to have a negative seeker declaration. Could I get a second? Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. That gets us to the criteria for a use variance. And the criteria are reasonable return, is it unique? Would it harm the essential character or quality of the district and was it self-created hardship? Excuse me. So the reasonable return, and I'm just gonna read here from staff comments. Building is uninhabitable in its current condition and its interior needs to be entirely rebuilt. Development is being funded in part by New York State grants. Use of the ground floor for residential units is required to meet grant guidelines and to get the project funded. So, let's discuss. It, it appears to me to be a win-win, but we have to go through the criteria to make sure we touch the bases of, of all the requirements. As the applicant noted, this is a different commercial than the commercial that we're generally talking about for this requirement of the setback from the street. There is no streetscape per se in this area. I mean, it's, it's essentially a standalone building, not too far from Mr. Yanati's building. But it's, it's definitely not a typical commercial streetscape. Making, making them observe the 30-feet, 30-foot setback seems kind of pointless in this specific situation.
Right, I agree.
It would, it would seem like a waste of space. If you did move, if, if you did make the requirement, what would you put in there? It would seem like the, almost the only thing you could put in there would be storage. And that, that would not help with the overall, and it doesn't meet with the funding.
Right.
It, it just doesn't seem compatible. Looking at all the funding, that's dizzying numbers and, you know, it's a lot of, a lot of moving parts here. I, I am satisfied that the, that the evidence, the, the financial evidence is, supports this, this part of the criteria. Is this a unique property or a unique use request? I would say yes.
I agree.
Yeah, it's, and it, it hits a lot of requirements for the, for the city that the city would like to have in place. That otherwise, I mean, otherwise you, it, I mean, you look at the, you look at the footprint of this building, look at the sighting of it. It's, it's got uniqueness all around. So I'm, I'm satisfied, uniqueness. Anything else need to say there? Okay. The effect of, on the character and quality of the district, I think it almost goes without saying. This completed project is gonna be 100% improvement for the, for the area. I don't, any, anything else to say? Yeah. And whether or not this was self-created, I'm really not sure that the applicant or the, the funding was out looking for this. It, it seems to have been a little bit of serendipity that led to this location being picked and it fits the, if it's the funding, if it's the need.
Yeah.
You know, it does not seem like anybody went out of their way to, for, for their project to, to the project winning over the unique property situation. So I think it, I think it's just a marriage of an idea and a location.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else we need to discuss? Then I would make a motion for the board, I would move to grant the use variance to allow residential use on the ground floor where it's prohibited in the C1 Service Commercial, Commercial District for, excuse me, for 1 North Depot Street, Reagan Development Corporation. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, that's unanimous. Good luck going forward. Thanks for coming in again.
Thank you. It's a great project.
Happy holidays. You're very welcome. Good luck going forward. Next case is 49 Court Street, Marchuska Productions LLC. Area variance to allow no landscape buffer along the western side of an existing parking lot where five feet is a minimum requirement in the C2 Downtown Business District. Hello, welcome back. If you could state your name and address for the record? Okay, welcome. And if you could tell us about your, your request for variance? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, now it's green now.
You just need to move it a little bit closer.
Is this, is this good? Okay. Several years ago, we came before this board and requested eight parking spaces, to add eight parking spaces at the metro center due to the need for our tenants and the fact that we're almost, or at that time, we were working on filling spaces. And at this point, we're kind of getting close to filling the entire metro center. We do have the space that overlooks Court Street. It's about 4,400 square feet. And a couple spaces on the first floor. One space is about 800 square feet and maybe another space, several hundred square feet. And we continue to struggle with parking at the metro center throughout, you know, downtown. We have been able to accommodate the tenants that we do have, but we want to continue to attract additional tenants, including the tenant for the remaining, or tenants for the remaining space. So we're requesting for four additional parking spaces. We would retain the five-foot existing sidewalk along the boundary between our property and the church. And it would be similar in character and style to the other eight parking spaces that we added in the past. It, it's, it's been helpful when we, when we requested for the eight and they are used mostly by smaller, smaller cars. And this again would just help to attract that, that tenant, which I'm not sure in the history of Metro Center, if it was ever completely full at one point. We're, we're almost full, completely full. And we're requesting approval. We did go before the planning board and they did push, push it forward to zoning. It did receive the approval of the planning. And I just request your consideration this evening.
Okay. Any questions from members of the board? Are these, these spots are gonna be for tenants or for customers coming in?
They'd be for customers for the metro center. We do also would allow if, if the church. if the, uh, church, uh, next door had say a funeral and they needed a spot for hers, they could, they could pull up to the one, to the, to the one spot that's right in the driveway. Or the, not the driveway, but the, uh, sidewalk area. So we're, you know, maintain a good, uh, relationship with them too, um. And they, and they utilize them on, on Sunday.
And these are the new spots here?
Yeah, uh, they're the, they're, uh, closest to, uh, Henry Street, the four spaces, uh, closest to Henry and there they, uh, there, there's a arrow on the bottom that says for nine by eighteen added parking spots.
Okay. Just want to be clear what we're talking about.
Certainly.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And at this point, I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing for forty-nine Court Street, here you variance. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Anybody present wishing to speak in favor or against the, uh, variance on the um, landscape buffer to the parking area? Anybody? Did we get any responses online or phone calls or mail, anything? Nothing. All right, then seeing no comments, I would move to, uh, close the public hearing for forty-nine Court Street. Could I get a second? All in favor? Hi. All right. I also see this one has some, uh, seeker criteria here. I would note that it's an unlisted action and I would make a motion that, uh, for the purposes of seeker that, uh, ZBA be lead agency. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Again, I'll go through the criteria quickly and I'll linger a little longer on the ones that don't have a checkmark. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? It doesn't follow them, so there is a, uh, small impact, I would say. Um, will the proposed action result in a change in the use of, use or intensity of use of land minimally? Will the proposed action impair the character equality of the existing community? I would say that would be a very small and I'm imagine unless somebody's really watching closely, they wouldn't notice the four spots got added. Uh, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused in the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public, private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character equality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion flooding or drainage problems? Four spots in a parking lot, I really don't think it'll have an effect. So, no. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Um, having gone through the criteria, I would, uh, like to make a, or move for a negative tech, uh, seeker declaration. Could I get a second, please?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right, that gets us back to the criteria for an area variance. And mind you, we're looking just at the lack of landscape buffer on an existing parking lot. So does it, and does this constitute an undesirable change? Will the, will these expansion of the parking area without any additional landscape be undesirable to the surrounding area?
No.
I I mean, I'd like to see all the green space we possibly can get, but I don't think four spots, five feet of buffer. I, I, I think that's nitpicky. So I'm not, I'm not overly concerned about that. Is there a reasonable alternative? The applicant could angle the parking in such a way that would allow them to fit landscape buffer, parking drive aisles and, and keep five feet of walkway. They could. I'm pretty sure based on the drawings that I see here. If you did something like that, you would it would, it would almost seem manufactured to fit in there. And again, we're talking about four spaces. And I mean, sure, there, I mean, I just don't, I don't, I don't see, I understand wanting to get green space, but I don't think you're going to get it on a project of this size. It doesn't seem reasonable to request it of them. Um, so I'm, I'm satisfied that and based on the need for parking, the, you know, the metro center being almost at full capacity, that I can understand there, the need there. Is it a substantial request?
No.
Based on what we're looking at, the four spaces, I would say not a substantial request. If we were again looking at the whole lot, maybe, but that ship has sailed. So I'd say not substantial for this small project. Is granting this variance going to cause an adverse impact to physical or environmental conditions? Again, big parking lots has this, as the, uh, staff has pointed out to us. Urban areas with heat islands and big parking lots is, is not a great thing. Again, it's in existence. There's, this is four spots, the area. It's not going to be a huge change to the existing area. I don't see the adverse impact being that grand. I'm, you know, I, I would welcome the, the applicant to consider in future projects to, to put more green space or include more green space and I'm sure that, that, uh, working with the city, they get told that a lot. Whether or not the, the, this hardship was self-created. Self-created to the extent that they need more parking and this, this is within the borders of their existing parking lot. I'm not overly concerned with this hardship having been self-created, so.
I agree.
So I would like to make a motion. Um, I would like to move to grant the area variance for forty-nine Court Street, Marchuska Productions, uh, for the area variance of no landscape buffer along the western side of an existing parking lot. Where five feet is a minimum requirement in the C two downtown business district. District. Could I get a second, please? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, good luck going forward. And I guess we can go back to the um, applicant is two Mitchell Ave, Lucky One Grocery Corporation. Uh, use variance to establish a retail food sales business where it is not permitted in C three medical zoning districts. Is the applicant present? Two Mitchell? No.
We did advertise the public hearing, so you still need to, to hold the public hearing and you could, uh, you could vote as well on the, on the case.
Okay, well. Um, so the well, we all know who the applicant is. We know what their requested variance is. So let's, you want to listen to the folks that have come to, I'm assuming you guys spoke, came to speak about it? No? If, if you'd like to comment, you're going to be welcome. We're going to open the public hearing and if you'd like to add your comments, that, that's fine. It'll get in the minutes. And then you don't have to come back next time? Well, I get, let me, let me open up the public hearing and then if you want to come down, we have to do all of our comments on the microphone so that we can get it recorded and, and transcribed and all that. Um, you, you're welcome to speak or not. That's your choice. We have choices. Could I get a second? Okay, then we're opening the public hearing for I'm having trouble with the numbers today. Two Mitchell. We got one, two and forty-nine. Um, anyone wishing to speak in favor or against the proposed variance, please come forward. Even if you just got comments, come on down. I, I really can't other than the, the application. This, do you know more than?
Yeah, I can. Um, this property was, was cited for operating a business illegally or without approval. Um, the official land use that they're doing, according to our zoning code is retail food sales. It's basically a convenience store. Um, that's not allowed in that zoning district. That's why they were cited, uh, uh, with a zoning violation. They're here to try to legalize that store, uh, by getting a, a use variance from the zoning board of appeals. Or that's why they're on the agenda. Obviously they're not here, but.
No, we, we can't hear you. You have to, you have to come down and speak to the microphone. Well, we, we, we really like having the public input. It really helps. Is the green light on? Push it, push the button once.
Okay.
And now move it close to yourself.
Okay.
There you go.
So I, I was excited to get the letter informing me about that. Zoning and proposed market. But it sounds like, so it's a, right now it's a laundromat. There's a laundromat and there's a little tiny store next to it.
Talking about the little store next to the laundromat.
So.
Could, before you go any further, could you state your name and address for the record?
Uh, Valerie Hatchkes.
Hi Valerie.
And I, um, my business is at nine Mitchell Avenue.
Very good.
Right across the street.
Okay.
Um. Okay.
So this is, this is the corner of that.
Okay.
Nearest the Meramidote Gas Station.
Right. And the way I read the proposal was the, I was assuming that the laundromat was going to be turned into a little grocery store.
I don't think there are any plans for that yet.
Okay.
This is strictly to, to legalize that little store that's currently there.
Okay, and, and they, there had been an arrest there or something earlier.
There's been a lot of, um, a lot of
Activity. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, because I, I looked right out my window and see, whatever.
Yep.
Okay. Well, I, okay, well, I was concerned that yet one more convenience store. There's a convenience store in every single corner.
Yep.
And it just doesn't, i- it, it doesn't always seem like it's just food convenience that's being, um, dispensed. You know, we don't, you know.
Yep.
And that was my understanding about that little store. But, um, anyway, so it's not going to be the laundromat turned into a grocery store.
No. Not at this point. I don't think we've gotten anything.
And then, no, and, okay, that, that was a big assumption on my part, but the, um, so it's just to legitimize the little store.
Or not.
Or not.
Yeah.
And, and I don't believe they sell anything that the other fifteen exaggerated, uh, convenience stores sell. But I don't know if that matters.
It may depending on what they actually sell. But that's
Yeah.
It, 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 uh, like the other, like one of the other, uh, applications tonight, there's a use variance which this, this property is not set up to be, it doesn't qualify as being able to have a grocery store or a convenience store. It, that's why they have to get a use variance and they have to meet all the criteria. So with them not being here, there's no way we, there's no way we, we can get to a determination
Okay.
of approval without them being here to say this is our economic justification. This is our
Right.
This is how, um, this is our uniqueness. This is, these are all the criteria and they'd have to meet all four of them to be able to qualify.
All right. Well. And, and to be determined a grocery store. It's just some kind of food is in there.
There, I'm sure there are certain criteria for that.
Yeah, uh, food and, and beverage sales, um, qualify them as a retail food sales location.
Mm-hmm. Okay. So I've been educated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thanks for making your comments. It, it helps with the case.
And thanks for sending me the letter.
Thanks, Shawan. He puts, he gets all that stuff done, right? All right, anybody else wish, wishing to speak in favor or against? All right, um, do we want to make any comments about the applicant now or or the, the, uh, or we want to close the public hearing or or we would defer it?
Done this, even though they're not here, we can, correct?
I believe we could if, after a discussion of the criteria.
Yeah, you'll be able to vote on it. This was an opportunity to
Yeah.
Be go over their application.
Okay.
They didn't.
Then we can deliberate after, after we make the motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Could I get a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Let's get into discussion of the criteria. Or use variance. Granting this, uh, would have created a, uh, undesirable change. Willie, that is a wrong one. Okay. Reasonable return. The applicant provided no financial evidence in the application. No, no information in the application and no information provided here. So we have no information for a reasonable return.
Right.
Is it unique? As stated by the member of the public who spoke, we got convenience stores of one shape or another on three corners in that area. At least. It doesn't seem unique. Uh, how does it affect the essential character equality of the district? I would also like at this point to mention the, the letter that we got from the, the Binghamton Police Department regarding the property and the number of calls that have been made in this past year. Was it a hundred eleven or a hundred fifteen? Hundred fifteen calls for one purpose or another and one of those calls would be made by me. It's not due just to that property. But the configuration of that and the laundromat and the spacing between the buildings. Um, but allowing this one to operate as a bodega. And I don't think it helps the character, the character of the neighborhood. Was it self-created? It seems to have been. And they chose to do a non-conforming activity in, in this area without checking or just going right ahead. And now it seems like they're um, asking permission after the fact, so. Anything further to add? Anybody got a motion they'd like to make? Yes. Could I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay. Um, I take it they'll get a letter from you guys or a phone call or something or both. Okay. And that gets us to the end of our agenda. Do we have any other business? Anything? All right. Well, it's nice to have you on the board. It's good to have seats filled back up. Welcome. And what's that? what's that? You live over that way? Very good. You get to know all the characters. I would like to make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Hi.
We are adjourned. Thank you.